Okay, sorry, I just hit the control. I'm gonna start over. We're gonna call this meeting to order December 2nd. It is a work session. We are at 2:07. Roll call, please. Or call to order, please. I didn't hear you, Josh. Unmute. Are you there now, Josh? No, are you muted? Where are you? Okay.
All right, Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Sutton here. Mr. Worcester Barth.
Present.
Ms. McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Here.
Ms. Richards.
Here.
All right.
Okay. Are there any agenda additions? Or changes? Okay, then I'll receive a motion for the agendas presented.
So moved.
We can't make motions.
Oh.
Jeremy's have a problem, though. He still can't unmute it, looks like, Anne.
I'm hitting ask to unmute. Okay, I think he should be okay now.
It's letting me unmute now, but as soon as I... It won't let me re-mute. Let me try it again.
You shouldn't really have to re-mute. That's probably the problem.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yep. Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the clerk and the treasurer salary resolutions. Mitch?
Okay.
Mitch, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In looking at the clerk treasurer salary resolutions, and honestly, then I guess you could almost take number four, too, is kind of a triad of topics. They seem to be all tied together. Is it my understanding that there may be some new information or some change in direction from the discussions that took place at our last regular board meeting?
Yes, well, I guess I can add some things to that. Is it okay to have the floor?
Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Anyway, after the meeting, I did a little investigation with the township attorney, and he gave me the charter or sent me start or gave me the information to read, which is the Charter Township Act of 359, Act 359 to 1947, Section 42.6A and sub-paragraph six. Basically states in a nutshell, everybody's welcome to read it, but I do have questions after this, that after the election is held, no township elected office can be reduced. So that being said, there's nothing that can be done for reduction of salary and/or to make them part-time. The way it's explained to me or the way I read the ordinance, it would have had to be done before the election. So it looks like we can put those back in place. The questions I have for the past board is, did they have this information? And the both resolutions kind of got punted from the October meeting. So I'm just trying to find out if legally the past board members understood this, because I sure did not.
I think that the past more board members were under the impression that it didn't apply to us, because we don't hold an annual meeting. But I haven't read it all yet, so I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, and according to the statute, you can do it prior to the new board taking office, which means after November 20th, which is the official date under statute, at noon that they take office. At that point, you cannot change lower salary unless it's agreed upon between the parties. If treasurer clerk were willing to take a reduced position, and they agree to that in writing, then it could be lowered. What I found, there are some townships, in fact, the township that I came from previous to this down by Fenton, they actually had that where the treasurer took on a new full-time job and was not, did not feel like he was able to carry out the duties of the treasurer. So, but he still has a vote on the township board and oversees that department, just not on a full-time basis. So sometimes that happens. So what this means is that we would not be able to hire the finance director position, because that was based on the reduction in cost from these two positions. So that position for right now, at least, I guess, is sort of off the table. The next point at which the salary could be reduced in part-time would be in 2024, prior to the next election. If this board at that point feels that it's necessary, so I, along with Mr. Worcester Barth, did an extensive amount of research and contacted other attorneys about this, and if we had, if the previous board had acted on this and put it in place at the last board meeting in November 9th, we could have done that. However, we did not. So at this point, we cannot make that change.
And as my understanding, after talking with our attorney and then validating with another.
Yes.
Steve, to answer your question...
Oh, go ahead, Tim.
I'm troubled. Just to finish answering your question, who knew or what did we know early on? And the answer is, I didn't know this particular legislation. I didn't know before anything, before it basically came up in the last week or so.
Well, I think the... Oh, go ahead.
Steve, to answer your question, I gave the board lots of information on a couple of different occasions in regards to all the information that we're talking about.
Good. I appreciate the information. Just trying to put all the pieces together, because it didn't make sense to me.
No problem.
Well, it sounds like that situation, as far as actually changing the hours and the pay is resolved. I don't think that we're going to change it. I don't think we're going to try to change it. And I'm not entirely sure that we should. I think that we're kicking this thing around, and we're beating a dead horse. It's pretty much to the point where we all agree that we're not going to be able to change it, nor should we. Or at this time, anyway. Now, but I do believe that the root cause for the issue that brought this to us in the first place is what we're here to discuss. I don't think that, personally, I don't believe that the clerk or the treasurer should be cut to part-time unless they want to be. You know, if they are the elected official, they should be the one that's in the office full-time. And if hours need to be cut, then it should be done to the employees in the office first. And the treasurer and the clerk should be there full-time to, you know, make sure that their duties are complete. Now, to that end, I think that the, from what I understand, the financial director position was brought up, because there are things that are falling through the cracks as far as accounting entries that are being done. And the more research that I do about it, it's not, it was explained to me, and I talked to the Woodhill Group a little bit, and it was explained to me that it's not necessarily Jamie's responsibility to do those entries. She's not an accountant. It is her responsibility to oversee and make sure that they are being done. And that is what, I think that's what this whole Woodhill Group contract and this whole shebang is all about, making sure that these accounting entries are being done correctly and that Jamie has the tools to do those. And I think that that's what we should really be focusing on. You know, the clerk and treasurer salary resolutions, you know, we've got, that's done. We can't change it, nor should we, in my opinion. But we do need to make sure that these accounting entries that are causing all kinds of massive adjustments and misery for everyone and not being able to see the reports and in a timely fashion and whatnot, because there's issues there. And according to, you know, some of the stuff we read with the Woodhill Group and, you know, some of the past audits that have been done, there are issues there that need to be addressed. And I think that we should be here talking about how we're going to help Jamie make sure that those things are done. And that's what I think we should do today. As far as the first five or the two through five on the agenda.
Thank you, Jeremy. The only thing that I would like to add to that is that technically, the general ledger and the journal entries that are done are done by the clerk's office. That's their statutory duty.
Okay, well, yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate that there are statutory duties. That you are absolutely required to do yourself, and I appreciate that. And I don't think we should take those away. We shouldn't try. That's not what we're here to do. But there are some things that have been complained about that are slipping through. And the more I look at it, the more it feels like, you know, you, Jamie, haven't had the backing to figure out what we're going to do to fix this, because you felt personally attacked. And I don't believe that that was the intention of the board. That is not where I'm going with this. I like you. I think you're a great person. I think you should stay exactly where you're at with a full-time position. We just need to make sure that you have the tools available to get these things done the way they're supposed to be done. And that's where I stand, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the clerk and the treasurer's office, we need to look at some things. There's been issues going on for a couple of years, and we've justified it with having Stevenson and Company do the adjustments, because it was cheaper than hiring a finance director in the past. That was back in 2004. We have always had like a seasonal part-time person in here to help us do open the mail, because the majority of the foot traffic comes to the counter and through the mail. That also helps with segregation of duty, which right now is a problem. So, and because we, the board sometime back took away that person, and then I also got the permission to have that person back in July and have been unable to fill that because of all the turmoil that's going on and surrounding the treasurer's office, clerk's office, on what positions were going to be full-time, part-time, would this person still have a job? Was a couple of questions I got, if they got hired in, you know, and what was the sense of training somebody if we're just gonna lose that position again? So in the bigger picture, yes, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at and take our time to do that and look at the whole bigger picture for the township to move and function properly moving forward.
Awesome. So my question to some of the older board members was, is, you know, you guys brought about some of these changes and tried to make some changes to the way that things are done, because you were missing information and you thought that there were some things that weren't being done. And I'd like to have those brought back up so that we can address them and figure out what we're going to do to fix it.
Okay, just to segue a little bit here. We were discussing the number three and number four, you know, and we're kind of migrating into, I believe, number five a little bit. Okay, so based on this discussion that we've just had for the last few minutes, I mean, I'm gleaning that the resolutions will be able to put forth on the December 14th will be similar to what is presented this evening or this afternoon, and that we will not, you know, be moving forward with the finance director position, correct?
We don't have a way to pay for it, so yes, I totally agree with that.
Okay, all right. So then, with the thought...
That's just my opinion. I guess I'd like to, you know, hear from everybody else as well, so.
Like, I think that that's what Bill also indicated, but right, I guess if everybody wants to just kind of, let's try to stay a little bit. I mean, I know they kind of all three, like, kind of flow together. But, you know, is the position, you know, of everybody then, if this clerk and this treasurer are going to remain full-time status, as is, that the finance director position would not then continue to be posted and would be removed from the budget? Is that the general thought?
I do.
Yeah. I think that's the general consensus, Anne, is that given where we're at, and at this time in the year where we are, it's, you know, December 2nd, we have to have our budget in place to have a public hearing on the 14th for Mr. Mitchell to try and squeeze money out of the budget to come up with this, I think it was a total of $113,000 for a finance director would be probably next to impossible. So therefore, I believe that needs to be taken out of the budget and the line items for the clerk and treasurer realigned the costs there. And if sometime in the future, if Mr. Mitchell feels that a finance director is the best option and can find money for that, given the current economic situation with our state and country, that's going to be difficult to do. But I think for now, yeah, we need to probably take the financial director position off the table as well.
Okay, all right. Okay, then I think, is everybody then comfortable moving on to, it's still going to be obviously a conversation about duties with the clerk and the treasurer's office, but then also with the Woodhill Group contract details, I guess. Are we ready for that discussion?
So the clerk and treasurer details, I guess, so the next, that's really not on the agenda. I don't remember seeing that.
No, there was, at one point, there was two resolutions delineating the clerk and treasurer duties. And I don't think we need to take any further action on those resolutions. They can be set aside.
I think that I'll reference the finance director, so I think, yeah, you're right, Bill, those will just go away.
Okay. All right, so I guess then we're moving on to the Woodhill Group contract details. I know, Mr. Mitchell, you have some information on that, that you were gonna... Well, that you've already emailed out, but just gonna kind of, you know, regroup on that before we start dialogue, I guess. Make sure I didn't mute them accidentally.
Yeah, that mute thing is crazy.
Yeah, I'll have to figure out. Yep, I guess I have to, each time if they mute, then I have to ask to unmute. So I'll have to figure out how I can do that different. Sorry.
Yeah, the last meeting was wonderful, because I could just hit the spacebar and then you guys couldn't.
Right, well, the problem with that was is nobody was muted. So even people, you know, other people that were calling in, so not trying to be a control freak by any stretch of the imagination. Really don't even like doing this task, but that being said, Mr. Mitchell is able to speak now, so sorry about that.
All right, so all of you have gotten kind of my trace trail of how we there was, and I had sent something out today, because I had found this morning that we had signed it on our end, but Woodhill had not signed it on their end. But work was completed on the authority of my predecessor. And so I think what the question really is now is, given what we just discussed, is is there something that the Woodhill Group could do that would assist with, obviously, we have a new clerk, and we have a longtime treasurer, can assist them in those items that were of concern? And is there, has that work already been completed from what little work that they did of the rough scope of work that was once in this professional service contract agreement? Or was there something else that we were hoping or wanting them to do? Or have we really gotten the answers we really wanted? Or, but to me, I look at it now as if we were to engage the Woodhill Group now, I think it's more of a, how can they assist in these two, the clerk and the treasurer? How can it help them in completing their tasks and maybe finding ways that where somebody had said, well, we think you should do this differently, or we think that you missed something? Okay, then how can we not, how can we improve those things? And again, knowing that it's now, at least 50% of that group is brand-new, I can't speak for Josh at all in his capabilities. I don't know them. And so he may be extremely qualified in doing general ledger and some other things. And maybe he doesn't need as much assistance as before. I don't know. But I think that's really where this contract, or if we were to engage them in any way now going forward, I think that's the position we should be looking at, is if we're going to engage them, to what level and for what reason?
I guess I'd like to take a little bit of that. I was kind of shocked to see that they actually did some work, because I did not know we had a contract in place with them, actually.
Secondly... We didn't. It was done on the authority under the $10,000 limit of the previous superintendent.
No.
A purchasing power, but not a professional contract. Let's be clear. Right.
Okay, but we, as a township, from what I read, signed it on our side, but it didn't get signed on their side. Is that correct? That is correct. Okay, so. Okay, officially, we don't have a contract, but we did engage. I didn't know that.
Yes, there's journal entries that were made October 14th through October 18th, and neither myself nor the former clerk were aware that those were made until we got the letter from Woodhill that was dated October 26th, and we got it in the end of November.
Okay, and then, secondly, thank you for Jamie for that. Secondly, in commenting or chiming in with Mr. Mitchell's comments, what's not setting well with me is reading the last couple of years' audits. And I've been in and out of the meetings since about May of this last year with that. And the last year's audit, where we pretty much adjusted the entire budget with over 60 to 70-plus entries. But the amount of adjustments almost matched the amount of our budget is very concerning to me. So, in my mind, I think we need a third party to help come in and tell us what procedures are not in place, what procedures aren't not working, what procedures are needed, and what controls are lacking, so this cannot happen in the future.
Well, I did reach out to the Woodhill Group to that effect and asking about the report that they provided to us. And they said that there was going to be a representative from the Woodhill Group on the meeting today. Is that... Yep, I think that's Ms. Lancaster. Was that her name?
They are, yes. And if we have questions, we can enlist and ask, you know, ask those questions to them, but thought we would have, we also have our accounting firm on the phone as well, or on the line as well, in case, like, Mr. Worcester Barth, you would ask some direct questions to them, you know, perhaps. I mean, the hope was, is that, I believe, Mr. Palmer indicated that, you know, the two main, I mean, obviously, Ms. McGuire was also a board member before the election. But Mr. Palmer and Mr. Cummings are the two that have carried on. And I know Mr. Palmer had indicated, at least on his part, and I shouldn't be speaking for you, I guess, Bill, but that, you know, that, I don't want to call the poop stop letter, not that, we didn't have surgery. But the Woodhill, what they summarized, what they had completed in their brief, you know, you were you were, I guess, I thought you said, satisfied with what they done and felt that perhaps their services were, you know, no longer needed. So if you could expand on...
Can I just clarify something real quick, Anne?
Sure.
You mentioned that we have an accounting firm. To my knowledge, we don't have an accounting firm.
I'm sorry, we have an auditing firm. I misspoke, I'm sorry. We have an audit, yeah, a firm that does our audit that we're contracted with, yes, and have been for several years.
Yeah, and just to clarify what you said there, I agree with pretty much what you said, other than the fact that, in terms, what I was saying about Woodhill was that I felt like, based on the letter that we received from them with the 14 items that they had completed in approximately 10 days, at a cost of about $3,500, as I recall, I felt that they had completed a good number of the tasks that were on the list in the contract that was approved by the previous board and signed by our treasurer or by our supervisor and previous supervisor and clerk. Now, there are a few tasks left that were in that list of tasks to be completed by the Woodhill Group in that contract. I believe it may be to our benefit to have them finish out some of those tasks, which would be to, you know, help, especially with Mr. Mitchell being new, might be a benefit to him in terms of the budget and helping to close out the end of the year to prepare for our budget and for our audit, excuse me. And and at our last meeting, the new board also approved continuing with Woodhill Group. So I'm, you know, I'm, I think they did a lot for us in a pretty short amount of time and at a fairly reasonable cost. And I would like to hear what the other board members have to say on that, in that vein. If they would like to have the Woodhill Group finish out some of the tasks that they weren't able to complete and help us get ready to, for the audit that comes after the first of the year.
I'm almost out of mind.
And if it would be a benefit to... I'd like to jump right in. I'd like to jump in here and address the first question, because I'm not really getting much of an opportunity here to speak up. So I agree with Bill's point that the letter from Woodhill was, I think, very good for what we, as Ascot Township, wanted to accomplish. The progress was great, but in that short amount of time of roughly 10 days, they completed so much, and the fact that they didn't complete everything is by no means a smack against them, because there were items that have to come up later in the year, like the year in close, which we can't do in advance. But I like the fact that they were on top of it and diligent and jumped right in. And I think that what they accomplished is a benefit to Ascot Township and by no means a waste of money. As far as, you know, whether or not to continue with Woodhill, I believe that it would be, it's our benefit for the reasons that have already been discussed. Jeremy mentioned one in particular, that it has more to do with helping people than trying to replace them or supplant them. The intention here is to try to put into place some sort of a solution that makes sure that the people who are treasurers and clerks don't have to be, at the same time, CPAs or, you know, formal accountants or something of this nature. There is definitely work that needs to be done that requires some additional skill set. There is definitely work that needs to be done that requires some additional skill set. And and I think that that's it, it's a matter of supplementing, not replacing the and I think that they're in a position to do that and I think for a decent price. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
I agree, and to that end, Anne, can you bring up the the fourteen points that they were talking about so that Ms. Lancaster could kind of explain where they were at and because I I didn't I wasn't part of the original conversation and I'd like to hear a little bit more about what they did, what they found. So that we can, you know, and and maybe the the current contract that we were looking at, you know, I I know that there's been some contention on what was on what that contract was going to take care of. And I'm sure that we'd have to alter that contract, but in my conversations with the Woodhill Group, they were very forthcoming with information about about exactly what Tim was saying with that, you know, I mean, we need to have a CPA come in even on a part-time basis every now and again to make these adjustments so that Jamie can oversee that and make sure that it is being done and that she has the tools to do that. So is there is is there a way that we can kind of go go through that list of fourteen items so that we can have an explanation of why the Woodhill Group did these things? And what we can do in the future to make sure that they're done? As well as have them explain some of the services that they offer to us? Because there's a whole bunch of packages that they have to supplement and help townships just like ours. And I'd like to have those things on record as being said so that we know that they're out there.
I will have to look through the pack, was that letter in the packet, I guess, I'm.
No.
No.
No, it's in your email. It's in your email, they emailed it to us.
Well, right, but it's not in the packet of information for me to click up to put up on this Zoom meeting, I guess, if that's what you're asking me to do.
Oh, you can't, it won't let you share your screen with just the with just that, just that document, okay.
Right, well, it probably would if I knew how to stop what I'm doing now, search through the email and then and do that, wait.
I thought the contract details for this discussion was more about the fact that Rob Epper did not draft that document that the supervisor and the clerk signed. And there were aspects of that contract that were illegal as far as like making those journal entries on behalf of the clerk and or treasurer. So I thought that was the discussion, that number five.
I think that's exactly what we're discussing when I was talking about, you know, where the contract that was that they were talking about doing, it's going to need to be changed in order for us to move forward with it for the reasons that you've stated.
Right, and I I see, I I see the comments that they made and some of them, some of the things, the adjustments that they made are not necessarily required to do. But I guess, going back to something that you said earlier, Jeremy, and I think Steve kind of alluded it to it also, is, you know, where are we really trying to get with trying to do all these things? What are the things that the board members are not seeing that not giving them a warm fuzzy? You know, to say, hey, we understand this or what we need to do to move forward? That that would make everybody happy, I guess, is because I know that in, I think it was number nine on Woodhill, it talks about they discussed new financial reports to present. Well, they're not new reports, we're already getting those reports and it's the revenue and expenditure monthly report, revenue and expense monthly report that the clerk's office sends out every month. It's also the quarterly report from the portions act with this fun summary from the superintendent that they were getting from Dave and from the and the quarter of the report that they were getting from me with the dialogue saying, and Dave also gave dialogue as well. So some of these things aren't new, we've already been doing them, so is is the report not reader friendly? Or, you know, I I guess I'm not understanding some of the other thing. I mean, I could address the things that, you know, if we wanted to go through that, but I really think that the Woodhill, like, I think we need to figure out where we want to be and then figure out how we're going to get there.
I I think that the 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 question that you're asking as far as an explanation of why is exactly why I'd like to have Ms. Lancaster go through this with us so that we have an understanding of because it sounds to me like there may be a you know, you're you're because you're you're saying that you are presenting all, you know, financial reports and all this stuff, and I think there might be a terminology misrepresentation where what you you think that you're presenting everything correctly, but the Woodhill Group is saying, well, you know, we do this for a living just like you and we go through and do all a whole bunch of town, different townships. And these are the and and these are the things that they that they see as as beneficial to the board to be able to see information that, you know, and and again, I'm the new guy here, so I don't know everything that that they're talking about, which is why I'd like to give Ms. Lancaster the floor for a moment to kind of go through and explain some of these things to us so that there's not, it sounds like there's discrepancies. Because you think you're doing everything correctly and the Woodhill Group thinks that there's things that you could that could be additionally done or done differently to make everything mesh and jive.
Right, and I understand that, but I guess I would want a legal contract before I would want their opinion moving forward to make sure that they are not crossing lines and doing things the clerk or the treasurer should be doing. Or that we have a contract with insurances, those type of things, I'm really not interested in engaging with them on a work session. Although we do have Cindy Scott, who is our actual auditor on the line that could address Steve's questions about the last three years of audit adjustments. Or especially the one that you referenced for two thousand and nineteen with the amount being almost equal to our budget itself. I know that she can answer that one, she's answered it several times in emails and in the presentation that we had earlier this spring, Steve.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm I'm kind of at a loss on why we just can't have a conversation with both parties. With contract or not, I think she already did some work. I I guess I'd like to hear from them.
And that work could be illegal at this point.
Have they uncovered anything procedural wise or control wise that we're lacking? That's my, that that's my concern. That we're going to get to another year end and we're going to have a massive amount of adjustments because we don't have the procedures and controls in place. Or if we do, I don't know if we're following them, so I'd like to have a a party look at that, other than the current auditor that we have. And I'm sure the I'm sure the current auditor is just fine.
The majority of the adjustments and the amount that was adjusted for this last year was because we closed out several funds. And and it relates to the majority of that.
Okay, I'm going to chime in here as I was at the legal meeting on Monday, Steve, Mr. Westerbarth. At that time, we had shared the work session agenda with the attorney. The attorney was not able to attend this work session and suggested that we postpone until next week. We at that legal meeting then discussed that that, you know, I mean, obviously, what we just discussed now in regard to the resolutions for the clerk and the treasurer and the finance director position. And that we felt that we could still have the work session to to discuss these items. I know that Mr. Epper would not be comfortable in discussing the Woodhill Group contract and the work that was completed with actually not a full executed contract or insurances that were in place. So I guess, based on the fact that I was sitting in that meeting, Mr. Sutton was sitting in that meeting and Mr. Palmer Palmer was as well, I would like to get your thoughts on whether or not we really should be discussing this contract details, I guess.
Did the did the league, did the attorney point out anything in the fourteen point list that was in fact done? That is illegal? Or was he just afraid that there could be something that's illegal?
Again, Mr. Spencer, I was actually asking the other two people that were sitting in the legal meeting.
Yeah, and to answer that question, Mr. Spencer, Rob Epper conveyed that there were some parts of the contract that were or may be illegal. In that meeting, we didn't review the contract specifically, that's why he was hoping to be a part of this meeting and get some time to actually go over that with us. So that is a big question for us right now as to, at least for me, that I haven't got a direct answer as to what made it illegal. And I I just know that that's why he wanted to meet with us and talk to the whole board about it all at once, so nobody was getting confused when he finally explains what's going on with that contract.
Right, and I understand that there are that there that there are probably issues with the contract, I understand that. I'm asking specifically about the work that was authorized by the then superintendent that was within his power to do, where they generated a fourteen point bullet list of the things that they have done. And they've already done this work, it was already authorized, and I'm asking for an explanation of those fourteen points.
It was not authorized.
So there's, right, I mean.
The treasurer did not authorize somebody else to go into the general ledger and make adjustments. I did not authorize that. And those are my duties.
So.
So have those adjustments been removed or or readjusted?
I am not going to comment on that at this time.
Why not?
Because I'm going to wait for the attorneys to talk to us about the Woodhill Group contract and the actions that they have taken in our financial software.
Gotcha.
Well, first of all, the the previous board did authorize the contract with Woodhill Group. And they were given the B S and A software. According to information I have, there's there's nothing that they have done that is illegal. And in fact, they're, based on conversation with Mr. Epper, there's really not nothing illegal in the contract itself, what he's unhappy about was that his his legal firm's name was at the end, but that was disclosed that he, and it's in the minutes that he was not conferred on this contract. And the fact is that the the board, while it's recommended that you follow your attorney's advice on on most issues, you don't necessarily have to. It's not a good idea, but you can. And so it was approved by the previous board. It has been approved by this board to move forward with the Woodhill Group at our last meeting, so there is, in my opinion, and based on other attorneys that I've talked to, there is nothing illegal per se about this contract. And so what 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 the board wants to do in terms of following through with this, we can bring it up at the next meeting and discuss it further. I don't, if if the rest of the board wants to have a closed session of some sort to discuss this with Mr. Epper, that's fine, I I weren't happy to go along with that. I don't personally think it's necessary, but I'll leave that to the rest of the board to decide.
Right, well, it sounds to me like you guys had a meeting with Mr. Epper and that he expressed some concerns, but didn't say that that is illegal. He said he's gay, has concerns. And if we did approve the contract and the superintendent did act within his power to act to to provide the information to Woodhill so that they could look over the account, over the over the books and do the things that they were going to do, I don't understand why we can't discuss it.
Well, there's a, what you're outlaying and what actually happened are a little bit not in in line, okay? The former superintendent, under his, under the auspice of the purchasing policy, engaged in work prior to it being approved by the board and a contract signed. So that work was done before anything was actually even executed. It then was approved by the township board to execute the document. The document document was executed on our end by the township board but was not then executed by the firm, nor were the insurances put in place. Subsequently, there was a meeting prior to this board taking place that discussed in closed session the thoughts of the attorney. When they came out of a closed session, they then terminated that contract with Woodhill Group. Which technically was never completely executed because the Woodhill Group never signed nor completed the insurances that were asked for.
I I think, Anne, thank you for that explanation, but I think at this point in time, I think especially for me, Jeremy and Joshua, as we haven't been involved in in those prior closed sessions around this and other topics.
Neither was I.
And Anne, sorry, I think it would be best at this point in time to I want to proceed with Woodhill to do exactly what, you know, I I've stated and add to what we, what the prior board wanted them to do was look at procedures and controls. However, at this point in time, I think we should go and have a closed session before the next meeting so we can all fully understand the prior closed session issues around this because I think we're just going to agree to disagree at this point, it's probably best to have everybody in the room.
As one of the people early on involved, I would like to concur with your your point there, Steve.
Thank you.
I would, I would definitely like to do that as well.
I agree with that.
So would I.
So when do we schedule it?
I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, we would have to schedule that prior to, and and that means that we're going to have to, we'd have to have a closed session before our next meeting, which is December fourteenth. We already have a public hearing for our budget presentation at seven, so we would need to make that closed session earlier because we've, you know, advertised the the presentation of the, you know, the public hearing for the the budget, so we can't, you know, we can't monkey with that seven o'clock time. That makes sense?
If I can interject.
Is that, and? Oh, okay, there, I'm sorry, sure, Mitch.
The Planning Commission meets on Monday the seventh. For Tammy and I to prepare the packets, that's like an all-day Wednesday thing from my understanding. So that really kind of leaves us either eight, which is a Tuesday, or that may be the very earliest part of the ninth.
Oh, you.
Done.
Our board.
Prior to the fourteenth.
Well, and we could still have it, we could have a closed session on the fourteenth, I'm just saying that the closed session would have to start at an earlier time than seven P M.
We could do that as well.
Right, that's what I was indicating, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, that's what we what we.
Right.
Okay.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that we kept that in mind when when scheduling, scheduling the closed session, that we cannot start it at seven o'clock because we've already advertised the hearing.
And do we know if Rob is available that day? I know his schedule is.
He had indicated before that if we gave him advanced notice that he should be able to accommodate and that's almost two weeks from now, so I would be optimistic, I guess.
Okay, do we want to schedule it that far out or do we want to try and hit this next week so we've got some extra time in case?
Well, I think we have to schedule a special meeting in order to have a closed session, so if we did it ahead of time, we'd have to schedule a special meeting.
Now, is that something we'd be able to adjust because I know we had Rob in place for next week if we needed to? Or is this something that does have to go in a closed session at that next meeting?
Right, we had.
Before.
Well, we had scheduled a meeting, so it would be a special. What was that date that we had tossed around, Josh, with him?
No, I believe that was going to be next Wednesday because he couldn't make our meeting today, so he was trying to see if we could do that Wednesday.
Right, and I think that's where Mitch is indicating there might be a schedule conflict with the Planning Commission, is that what you're saying?
No, that's on Monday.
They meet on Mondays.
But it's my understanding that Wednesdays before board meeting, regular board meetings is packet preparation. And if something's gonna if it is going to take place, it needs to happen in the earliest part of the, on the ninth and not late, if especially if there's something that's going to get added.
Gotcha.
Would you, would you like me to see if he would be okay with meeting with us that morning? To go over this or whatever, everybody prefer that we push it into a closed session before the regular meeting?
If we need to have a special meeting to get this done next week, then I think we should do that.
I'm in all favor of that ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, we need to get.
Probably going to affect the budget.
Yeah, I mean, we need to get this all aired out so that we are all moving forward on the same page here because it sounds like we're dancing around and and not and not getting to the root of the issue here.
Right, I think we need to, like I said before, establish what. Right, I think we need to, like I said before, establish what what the board wants to see happening moving forward, and then how do we get there?
Right, I I I think we're, I think everybody wants that. We're just somehow um dancing around how to get there.
Exactly.
Yeah, so and and maybe um, you know, just uh some frank discussions with uh, you know, um the current board and staff and questions, you know, direct questions and maybe some examples of the reports. Ms. McGuire, that you're talking about that are being being submitted, you know, maybe those can be shared, you know, as well.
Yes, because the new the new board members haven't seen those.
Exactly, so it might be just helpful in that way. So, so again, we would be talking about a work session, um, I'm sorry, a special board meeting on Josh.
Maybe on the ninth and we're shooting for, I would assume, maybe eight, nine in the morning to get that done ahead of what you have going on, Mitch?
Yeah, that would be preferable, since this is my first real packet go around.
It would have to be eight A M. for me, and I'm only available eight to ten that day. Booked to receive it.
Button them down for eight A M. I will, I will reach out to Mr. Eppert after our meeting today and um see if we can get that done and email that out to you guys. Um, if that's gonna be a possibility or not, then we can take motion on that, or I guess if not, we'll find out if he can come to closed session as the alternative, if he can't make that morning. Or do you guys want to see if there's another day before a meeting?
Well, I think it's important that we uh have this discussion um sooner rather than later since we are into December, and if we actually, in in fact, do want to continue Woodhill to uh work on closing out this year uh time for that if we get too late. My main my main concern is with the uh budget. We we definitely absolutely have to have that public hearing on the budget on the fourteenth. And uh what what needs to happen between now and then is Mr. Mitchell needs to make the the requisite uh adjustments and changes uh to the current budget that we have uh to realign it with what we've we've talked about previously. Uh, I don't think the Woodhill Group uh really is a concern in terms of a budget. I don't think it's um something that, you know, we need to um look at it adjusting the budget for. It's it's something where it's something it can be appropriated if it's what we want to do, but uh I think it would be important to have if if the rest of the board wants to have this closed session that we do it uh next week possible. Um, otherwise, you know, we may be running out of time for the Woodhill Group to even even accomplish the the task we're gonna ask them to do.
Right, and that's understandable, and that's why I'm asking. I just want to make sure we can work this in because it really seems like we all need to sit down in one meeting with our attorney and get this information from him, so it's all hashed out. We all hear the same thing, and we can all move forward with information so we know what to do, like was brought up. There are new members here. There are people who haven't heard it. And obviously, everybody who was in that meeting has a little different take on how they've heard it, so I think it'd be good to have Mr. Eppert sit down and run through any concerns he had, and like Ann said, we can ask him some open ended questions. It gives us time to work it out before that next meeting as well. Instead of kind of dragging that stuff in on top of the budget as well.
Is there a way that we'd be able to schedule that meeting earlier than the ninth? I mean, could we do Monday, the seventh?
I can definitely see what his availability is.
Well, seeing as how he's busy and we're all busy, it would probably behoove us to try and get it earlier. So that there, you know, that way that we've got a couple of extra days there if he is unavailable.
Right, well, I know the ninth is um why Josh is saying that, or is it Wednesday, the ninth, I'm sorry. But why, yeah, is because that's what the the date that he had said that he could be available um to reschedule this meeting to. So um, that's why we're shooting for that.
We've already got him on the hook, so we're trying to keep him right where we want him.
I'll nail it down then, and let's get it over with.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Well, typically, he's available on Mondays because that's when we've normally had our the legal conferences every Monday at noon.
Oh, I can tell you, I'm available all day on Monday, so.
And what time was that planning commission, Mitch?
Seven P M. at night.
Seven P M. I just didn't want the two to conflict.
So if he could do a Monday um morning as well, we could do that.
Or even the new, we we already in theory are on the books for a noon um with him uh for the regular legal meeting, so.
Do you want to see if we just have everybody come to that legal meeting and do it there?
Well, we would do a special, right, we would see if we can convert that to the special meeting.
Okay.
Close session for this topic. So we have a cup, we have a couple of dates there to work with, and we'll be getting back to everybody A S I P. then.
Sounds good.
I'm sorry, go ahead. What was that, Jamie?
Sounds good.
I I'm only available ten o'clock on Wednesday, just like Steve actually, too.
Well, I'm only available eight to eight to ten. I'm after ten o'clock, I'm booked.
Okay, all right.
But Monday at noon would work for everybody, too, if we move it there.
Yep.
Yep. For me.
Yep, that's fine with me.
Okay, great. All right, well, we beat that one up pretty good. Um, so um, are we ready to move on then to the water rate study, um, number six? I guess. Okay, all right, so I will turn that over to you then, um, Mitch?
Yeah, if uh, let's see. Yeah, if I could get remote and then
Oh, I'm proving that because that's what it tells me to do, hopefully.
And then uh and then can I could you allow me to do screen sharing?
I don't know if I can or not. Um news, would it be new share? It says remote control, like you're controlling it. Are you trying to, what are you trying to pull? I mean, I have the whole packet here.
Okay, then uh if you could proceed to be page four. Hey, one stop, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Everybody getting sick to their stomach yet looking at that flip through? I am. Right there.
Um, keep going a little further. That's page two, two more pages down.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Take one more, this one, the proof of rates?
Yeah, uh.
Or?
Uh, think one more.
One more. There we go.
Cash, all right.
Yeah, there we go. That's good. Um, okay, so um, it's my understanding that the water rates have not been adjusted since nineteen ninety-seven. So that's twenty-three years.
That's correct.
Yeah, not good. Um, the uh proposed increases per year. Um I'm looking at a different one than that one, but um it's the real issue is obviously we need to increase them. What the analysis that Tom Tracyak from Baker Tilly performed is that in the increase from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one and the increase from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two would be an increase of three dollars and sixty cents of the ready to serve charge. And that's a monthly charge, so that'd be an increase from it's currently standing at seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And it would increase in twenty twenty-one to ten dollars and eighty-five cents. And then in twenty twenty-two, it would increase again to fourteen dollars and forty-five cents. So over those two years, there'd be a three dollar and sixty cent increase in both of those years for the ready to serve charge. Now, you may ask, what is ready to serve mean? Ready to serve is if you have a tap to your property, the township and its water system, we are holding basically capacity and creating capacity for that service at that location. So you pay that amount whether you use ten thousand gallons or zero gallons. Okay, that's what the ready to serve charge is. The other increase is in the consumption charge per hundred gallon. And in twenty twenty, so per hundred gallons, it's forty-four point four cents per hundred gallons. The increase to twenty twenty-one, it would go up by six and a half cents per hundred gallons to fifty cents, fifty point nine cents per gallon. And then the same type of increase for twenty twenty-two, and it would go up to fifty-seven point four cents per hundred gallons. Now, I can tell you again, when you haven't raised rates since nineteen ninety-seven, this is kind of what happens. You end up having to make large leaps in these two areas. Um, obviously, with consumption charge, again, it costs money for the water to be produced, tested, for the mains to be maintained. And so that charge again is to try to bring us up, if you will, bring us up to twenty twenty-one. So when you look at those rates from twenty twenty, you gotta say to yourself, hey, if this was nineteen ninety-seven, I'd pay the exact same rate. That's not uh, that's not a good way of doing it. Obviously, your electric bill, your cable bill, your gas bill and everything else, I'm sure have not stayed to nineteen ninety-seven levels. If you look at the bottom uh where it says typical monthly bill, okay, those increases on the water side, it'll be an increase of six dollars and twenty cents. Um, it does calculate now, and again, remember what this gap of twenty-three years, it is a twenty-four point eight increase from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And then in twenty twenty-two, another six dollars and twenty cent increase on the water side, and that's about a nineteen point eight seven increase. That's not typical, but again, waiting twenty-three years to adjust your rates is not typical. Um, on the sewer side, in case you're scoring at home, uh, that increase is of four dollars and sixty-seven cents uh from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, which is a thirteen percent increase. And from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, it's a five dollar and twenty-seven cent increase, which is about thirteen percent. Again, I think that was another where we hadn't adjusted rates in extremely long time, but we're only really talking at this time about water. So the recommendation from Baker Tilly is to make these increases, and then in subsequent years, the rates would be adjusted by three point five zero, which is an an average, a long term average of consumer price index and inflation. Uh, so that is the recommendation that was given to us. Uh, I would recommend that the board we'd approve that and move forward. If you are to take on some debt service in twenty twenty-one of a twenty twenty-one bond and a twenty thirty bonds, you're gonna need uh this type of funds to be able to pay those bonds without taking on debt.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mitch. Are there um questions? From the board members?
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question for Bill because I know he put considerable amount of time on this. Is is this uh taking into account the vacant lot issue, Bill, going forward? Within the years?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, so I'd like to address that because again, I was kind of vocal when this came up in the summer, but uh talking to Bill, it's, it was not my understanding at the time that the township never charged for ready to serve on vacant lots. In fact, I think then I have Bill to concur this that we have charged vacant lots except for Lakewood Shores uh in the past. Is that correct, Bill? So we're just getting them back up to speed?
That's correct.
So then we still have a a a great, so my apologies there. I I thought we were trying to basically come up with a new tax that we haven't done in the past, but it just seems like we're trying to make it fair for everybody who've been charging some customers, but not all. The only gray area I think we still have out there is unfortunately where I live is St. George's Point with the the private utility, basically the private water line, the associationals, but I think we can address that that later. Um, and it needs to be addressed.
I don't understand. What do you mean, private private line, what?
The the line along Shoreview Drive is not owned by the township. Uh, although we're looking for a way to the proper easements are in place, that we would just turn it over to the township, so it's technically a private utility, and I think it's the only one that exists in Osco, the township that has city or township water, HERSA water, too.
No, there actually, Steve, there are, there are some other areas that have private uh lines on private roads. Um, and um what what we would like to do is if if it's requested that the township take over responsibility of those, then we need to to know what what it is specifically that we're taking over. Um, we we need to have engineered uh plans that were used when the lines were installed. Uh, it may, it may require that we do some investigating to, you know, determine uh what line, what actually on is underground because uh before the township could, you know, sort of inherit that responsibility. Uh, we need to know specifically what it is we're 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 taking on, so there's there's some work that needs to go into that, but I think that's a separate issue from these water rates. Um, and I would, I will tell the the board that, you know, we spent, we had several, the previous board had several work sessions with Mr. Tracyak uh on on going over these uh this information here for the rate study. Uh, one thing I would, I would like to point out, if I might, for the, for anybody that's new on here, if you look at the uh, it's on page eighteen and nineteen of the packet. It shows, as Mr. Mitchell pointed out, the uh the current a ready to serve charge of seven dollars and twenty-five cents and the consumption charge of forty-four cents, and that's uh that's carried out all the way out through um twenty forty. So that's, that's the system we have in place now, so there would, there's not any changes to be made uh for the next twenty years. Um, if you look, if you if you go down on that page where it says net cash flow, that's the money that we have to operate the system. If you'll notice under that in the in the current system, you'll see that that's a negative and it and it increases in negativity all the way throughout, which means that you're actually losing money on this. And just to explain that, um, both the sewer and water funds are considered enterprise funds, which means they have to be supported by the users of that system. We cannot take taxpayer money or general fund money to put into either the sewer or the water fund. Uh, and if you think about that, uh, the idea is that uh, the people that aren't getting a benefit from it shouldn't have to pay for it. In other words, people that have private wells and septics, uh, they their tax money should not be used to fund in any way a system that's being used by uh people who are using it. So that's, that's why these are considered uh in auditing, you'll see in the audit, they're considered enterprise funds, which means they have to be self-supporting. And uh in order to do that, you can't consistently run a negative cash flow. Uh, anybody that's been in business knows that, you know, that's, that's a tough way to go. So if you look at the proposed cash flow analysis with the with the changes that Mr. Mitchell pointed out, you'll see that through going through time, uh, once we get to twenty twenty-three, actually in twenty twenty-one, there's a positive cash flow, but after twenty twenty-three, from there on, uh, if the positive cash flow uh on out to the uh to the rest of the rest of the term. And so these are the things that were, you know, pointed out to the previous board and work sessions uh that we held, and um I I think it's important for, and and maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm over speaking here, maybe everybody's aware of this, I don't know, but just for explanation to the doom, to the noon board members of how these uh things operate, that's, that's. for explanation to the doom, to the noon board members of how these, uh, things operate, that's, that's where we're at. And that's why it's important that we, uh, adjust these, these water and sewer rates so that we're operating a system that will sustain itself.
And, and Bill, just, just to clarify, I'm sorry, one, one point though, with Lakewood Shores is primarily affected for everybody who owns a lot over there that has curb stop, correct?
Yes.
And then all of those curb stops, all that utility in Lakewood Shores is township responsibility or owned by the township?
Well, like you pointed out, St. George's Point is in Lakewood Shores, and that's
No, no, St. St. George's Point is not in Lakewood Shores. It's, it's not part of the association.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, i- in that case, I, I believe, um, I, I believe everything else in Lakewood Shores, we, we own. It's our infrastructure and our, our, um, system.
And in the past, in the past, nobody has been charged unlike other residents or a lot of our property owners in the township for that ready to serve fee. So we're just, we're just catching up to make it. Why, why they didn't get charged, we don't know, but it's just catching up to help pay for the utility that's there.
Wanted to add something there. I, I live on US twenty three. Um, and I had a curb stop in my yard, um, and never was charged a ready to serve. Um, so I don't think that it was just Lakewood Shores. Um, I'm thinking it has something to do with an indirect, um, way that the, that if somebody else maybe paid for that water main to go in, um, that, that possibly that could be the, the trigger, but I don't, I haven't dove into that. But, but I know personally, I bought my house thirteen years ago, there was always a curb stop in my front yard. I never paid, uh, for a ready to serve, um, at all. Um, I recently connected to the, to the water service, um, a couple of years ago. Um, and now, you know, have a meter pit and everything else, but I don't believe I'm the only person along US twenty three, um, that's not paying a ready to serve, so. Okay, I think there's a few things we need to work out still on that, to be honest with you, Steve.
Okay, yeah, I was just, because I thought we were just doing this as, you know, kind of a yeah, lack of a term, another tax, but if we've been charging other property owners in the township and we're just trying to catch up, then I
Generally, there is a ready to serve if you have, uh, water and sewer connections, yes, but I can tell you, I, again, had a curb stop in my yard. Um, and it was connected to the main, so, and it, it was nothing that was done, um, by me as a bonus. It was there when I purchased my home. Um, so don't want to add, open a can of worms for myself that I don't need, but, um, but, uh, that being said, I'm pretty sure that there's others along US twenty three that, um, are not connected that, and like, I just think we need to do a little bit more due diligence on that.
Okay, well, it, to me, it's fair. I mean, this is a big utility and it's gonna have, as we all know, big expenses coming down the road.
Yeah, oh, I, I'm, I'm not disputing the water, yeah, that, the increase, and when we, you know, as Bill pointed out at our, um, at our first meeting, the reason we tabled that bond resolution is because we have to have a way to pay for it. Um, and as Bill pointed out, if we don't adopt, um, this, uh, water rate increase, we're not going to be able to pay for that. Correct? That's what your, that was what your point was, so, makes sense.
Yes, and, and, and to your point, Andy, um, you, you actually should have been being charged, uh, for that. Why, why you weren't, I don't know, but I do know that for the most part, um, most people in the township who have a, uh, uh, the, um, ready to serve their, uh, property, uh, are being charged. Uh, there may be like yourself and some others that weren't for whatever reason, I have no idea.
Yeah, like I said, I bought the house that was there. I don't, I don't know, I'm just going by, yeah, what, what, uh, yep.
For the most part, it's primarily the Lakewood Shores that has
Right.
Lots, and, and the, the residents there can, can bypass that if they just, they can have it removed.
Right, right. I know that there was, I did see some information about that, for sure.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Bill, I think, uh, thank you for clarifying all that, because I didn't understand that when it was brought up.
Sure.
But thanks for all the work, and from what I've read, from what through this, it's a heck of a lot of work to get where we're at today.
Okay, so any other, um, discussion on that? I know that that, um, that item will be on the agenda for the December fourteenth meeting. Um, this was kind of just to give an explanation of, um, before we get there, so.
Yeah, and this, this, like I said, this is an important issue to get, uh, you know, we did pass the, the sewer rate increase, and this is, uh, even equally or more important that we get this, uh, approved so that we can approve the bond issue for the eight million dollars that, uh, we're looking to, uh, use to make improvements and, uh, expansions in the water system and the sewer system and that sort of thing.
Any other discussion on that topic, then? All right, the next is the twenty twenty one budget, um, that was included. I, um, I, I think based on the premise that, um, depending on the discussion about the uh, treasurer and clerk position and removal of the finance director or not, um, that we are gonna need to make some, uh, changes to the budget. Is that the reason for putting that on there?
Yes, so based on, on discussions today, uh, we'll go back and we'll retract out the finance director and the accompanying entry points on that and do some restoration on the clerk and the treasurer side.
Okay.
Um, can I speak, Ms. Supervisor? Also, in the treasurer's budget, there was nothing budgeted for the part-time position, and in July, that was voted on and that motion was passed. Um, I don't know if that's a discussion we want to have again still, maybe after, uh, our, our closed session, maybe we can get to where everybody really wants to be and try to work out, I don't know if we'll get there in one meeting, but, um, but it was voted on and it's not in the budget for this year. And also, I would like to ask the board for approval to purchase the delinquent personal property tax module. Uh, so moving forward, that would make it a lot simpler. Right now, I do it all manually through the tax system, uh, which would address or speak to, uh, some of the, one comment from Woodhill and also from, uh, speaking with Jamie, are you, Jamie and Cindy, our auditors also.
How much is that module?
Um, I asked for a copy or a quote from them and I haven't received it yet. We just didn't do it in the beginning because we thought it would be just trying to save money and not do it. So we've been doing without it since two thousand and six, and, um, maybe it's just time to look at it. Might make things a little simpler.
That's a BSNA module?
Yes.
Are there any, are there any other modules that could, uh, that you're, that you've been looking at that may, uh, streamline your processes, just out of curiosity?
For the treasurer's office specifically, just the, um, special, just the delinquent personal property one, actually right now, but I haven't looked to see what else is out there that we could utilize, or we could probably use, um, updating training for like general ledger, and, uh, that might be something that would be beneficial for the new clerk and for myself and Jane, because I always have new tricks and tips to do different things, and I don't know if they're doing that remotely now, or if you can still go down there to their, their facility, or sometimes if there's enough people that need to be trained, they'll come here also. It might be helpful for, um, the new superintendent and the supervisor as well.
And I believe, uh, I believe that this past year, uh, we, we approved, uh, purchasing some, uh, additional BSNA software that has been implemented, and from what I, uh, it's, it's not something I use on a regular basis or at all, but based on, uh, comments that I heard, uh, prior to the new board, that, uh, all of that software was, was helping greatly in, uh, um, performing tasks that need to be, uh, done. Some of the, um, especially for the, for the clerk's office. So if, if some additional BSNA software is, is needed for the treasurer's office, I, I, I think that's a, that's a great way to spend our, our money to make it more efficient there, to be able to, uh, um, do a better job there and in, in a more efficient way, so, uh,
I agree.
I would be in favor of, of that, for sure.
Absolutely, and I'd like to pose that question to the clerk as well, Mr. Sutton. Is there, are there any modules that you've noticed that may help your positioning?
I'm just getting started. I haven't found any yet, but, um,
You haven't mastered this yet?
There's a lot, just I'm, what I already have access to to master. Noticed there are other programs, um, and I know, uh, we have discussed that, uh, utilizing some of those programs. I'm just like giving that Woodhill notice they mentioned, and I believe Jamie said we do, we can purchase that BSNA program um, that they were offering. So, you know, things like that, definitely it's gonna make our, our job easier. If there are any modules that go with the ones we have, I, I'll definitely bring those forward as soon as I find them, because overall, I like that we're able to flow things through BSNA, and I believe as we go forward, to make it easier for us to all mesh all that information with accountability and checks and balances, so. I'm definitely on board for, uh, technology overhaul for a lot of these things, just because these small programs, you know, something like Jamie said, simple as buying this program, that they're spending hours calculating where we can buy a module, pump the numbers and get the answers, saving us time and money, making us more efficient in our departments, so.
Also, I'd like to bring up, um, and I don't know if it needs to be in the budget for twenty twenty one, but this year is the deadline for the new chart of accounts, and it was a collaborative effort, effort between the superintendent, the clerk and the treasurer's office, um, to get this taken care of. Dave was pretty much taking the lead on that and seeing if we could get the information from the county or have the, um, Stevenson and Graysick work with us to do that change. It's a very large overhaul of the chart of accounts. Um, we might be able to use some of the guidance from BSNA and, um, the county and the, and the auditor's office, but a lot of it, we're gonna have to figure out moving forward, what, what account numbers work for us, Asco to Township, because we are a little bit more unique as being a larger township than regular town charter townships are. Um, so there is going to be a lot of work moving forward for that, and I, I know Dave wanted to, um, recruit Stevenson and Company to do the majority of that work, so that also would probably have to be something that would be budgeted. I know that he had some, uh, emails back and forth to the county and to Stevenson and Company. So maybe Mitch, and while you're digging out all your emails and other things, might come across something like that. Also BSNA, when you open the program, it kind of tells you to, gives you a highlighted, letting you know, hey, this is the final year for this. We need to, you need to get this done and be in compliance. So that is a big project that we do have coming up this year.
Sounds like fun.
Oh, boy, I can't wait.
I'm picking up on a little sarcasm there.
Gonna say that, okay.
Well, while we're talking about the budget, I just, if somebody could, and, and I know Mr. Mitchell is new as well, but a couple of things just, uh, standing out at me that I'd like a little clarification on. Uh, it's Department two sixty six, property O and, O and M maintenance, and it's professional fees. The amended budget for twenty twenty was a hundred and forty two thousand one eighty seven, and it's jumped to two hundred and five thousand for twenty twenty one. Like to understand a little detail around that. And in
Can you give me the whole, uh?
General ledger number?
Yeah.
Go back to it. It is two three six, two six six, eight oh one dot zero zero zero. I'd like to understand the detail. It's gone up to two hundred and five thousand, and in twenty nineteen, it was twenty, basically twenty six thousand dollars.
Well, that, I, I would totally just be speculating, obviously, if I, if I speak, but, um, property O and M, um, use, is the, uh, fund that was just used out in the, um, Worcemith District. I would assume that Mr., um, Chaffer and Todd Dickerson probably worked on that budget together, because I believe that that is where, um, some of the EIC funding is coming from, is it not, or?
Yes, I, I'm looking, I'm looking here at the GL activity report for, uh, from two thousand and eighteen through the end of this year, and that is correct. Todd Dickerson's, uh, budget, his, uh, she's, his contracted amount comes out of that line item, along with, uh, the digital marketing service came out of there for twenty two thousand dollars, Skill Avenue project, so most of his economic development projects look like they're coming from that fund.
Okay, well, if you could just send me an email on that, just so I can make it clear to myself, yeah.
I will print this, and then if you need any more detail besides what that is, I'll be happy to get it for you.
Okay, and thank you. And I have one other, one other big one that's standing out here. Department, uh, let's see, Fund five ninety sewer, engineering fees, uh, general ledger number five nine zero dash zero 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 dash eight two one, uh, period zero zero zero. Uh, amended, they were a hundred and thirty six thousand in twenty twenty, and they're jumping to a quarter of a million dollars in twenty twenty one. So there's a lot of that going to, I just would like to detail to see what's, what's within that figure. Those are the two big ones that jumped out.
Okay, I can email that to you.
Thank you.
Copy me on that as well, just so I can see it.
Jeremy, yep.
Please, yeah.
Send it around.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, um, any other discussion on the twenty twenty one budget? Okay, then, uh, we move on to, um, we do have a public comment uh, section here. Um, is there any public that is on the line, um, that would like to make comment? If you, um, would like to make comment, um, you have a raise hand feature that I believe you can use. Um, I'm not sure on the call-in, I forgot what that one was, but again, um, raise hand if you are calling in, or, or I'm sorry, if you are, uh, logged in. I am not seeing any raised hand. I could do a brief, I don't know if I can unmute all. I think I can, oh, I know, I can, um, I think somebody said I can just click on each one of the callers to ask if they had something to ask. Think I can? Nobody gave me those directions, sorry, um. Um, caller, I guess, um, nine three seven, two three one, three seven eight four, do you have any questions? We have a seven three nine, two three six four. Are there any questions?
Oh.
No.
That is.
Okay, uh, seven three nine, five seven two nine, any questions? And an eight two zero.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you, yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Richards, I'm Brian Haley, uh, Scoda.
Okay.
Couple of things, uh,
Okay.
Have been listening to the meeting. I'm glad you're gonna discuss, discuss it more with White Hill and all that. But I would like to talk about, um, now, Mr. Worcester Barth has brought it up a few times, and I guess he owns development properties on the, uh, St. George's Point or near there, Cedar Lake.
I do, yes.
And also, yeah, my time, um, now, you're on the board, and you want to develop the property, which means, I guess, for sale or whatever, fine. But I am seeing an appearance of a conflict there, right off the bat. And I think, uh, the board should discuss that. And also, I believe at the last meeting, you got yourself on the Cedar Lake Improvement Board, which would also, I guess, we're gonna look to improve that lake, which I love. I mean, our, our family goes back to that lake to the forty forties specifically. So I know that lake quite well. We're all for improvement. But I do believe here we're at the point of past an appearance of a conflict. I think we're at a conflict. And I would be, I'm surprised that you would try to get yourself there. Uh, I guess what I'm really getting to is I see things in our town where small things are made in the big things. And big things are somehow diminished and made in the small things and we look past them. Because we're a smaller community and we all want to get along and treat each other with respect and this and that. But rules are rules. So I'm saying that I believe we are at past an appearance of a conflict of interest with Mr. Worcester Barth. He wants to develop his property. It's all good. Nobody knocking that. Thing of it is, if you can steer things and you got the power to do that a little bit, we see, uh, you're not shy. So you can get things going your way. And uh, so that's where the conflict lies. So when we set a bar for the appearance of a conflict of interest, that seems harsh. It did when I was young. But as I've gotten older, I see the wisdom in that. So as long as you're having the attorney come in, instead of this being neighbor to neighbor and being kind all the time, let's just get right down to the brass tacks of the rules and uh see what the lawyer has to say about these uh, what should I would say again is uh, it's beyond an appearance. So anyway, good luck in the future and uh, I hope we uh make some good, solid, honest decisions concerning our town. Thank you.
Hey, uh, thank you, Brian. All right. All right. Okay. Any other questions? I just, hopefully I didn't just mute everybody. Is the board there? Sorry, I think somehow or another I just sorry, somehow or another I accidentally muted you. I'm sorry. That's me.
Yeah. And, and I definitely want to address that. I'd like to understand uh what Mr. Haley believes the conflict of interest is with me. Mr. Byer lives on Cedar Lake and was on the Cedar Lake Improvement Board for many years. And if there is any conflict that affects any property that I own, and it comes to the township for a vote, I will gladly recuse myself.
Right. And I was, right. I, I was gonna point that out, Mr. Westerbarth, that Mr. Byer was um on the uh Cedar Lake Board. Um, so I was gonna point that out as well. And I know um that if there are, I mean, all of us live in this community in some way, shape or form. Um, there's gonna be a situation where we might have to recuse ourselves. Um, and if that does um happen, then I'm sure you will do that. Um, but again, Mr. Um, Byer was, lived on Cedar Lake and was on the, on the board. And I think it's kind of a good thing, actually, because you, you are, you are on there. So you're very familiar with it. Um, so it's, it's a positive as well.
Thank you.
So.
And I will gladly recuse myself if there's any sort of conflict, potential conflict.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I believe that that's it. I think anyways, I'm gonna have to perfect this public comment section about um phone calls. I'm sorry, I'm not quite understanding what I'm supposed to click or not click. But um, that being said, I believe that we are ready to adjourn. Is that correct?
I think so.
All right. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn then? Or we're not supposed to make motions in special meetings?
No motions.
Sorry.
Declare us adjourned.
Okay. I declare us adjourned then. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. All right.
Bye.
Bye.